We are being present, we can resume the town meeting. Last night, we were in the middle of Article 4. So we'll start tonight with line item 80. And again, if anybody is here tonight that wasn't last night, on Article 4, we are taking them in sections, they're already identified, so this next section is Public Works Highway. I will, because of the vote on the Wage Personnel Article at 1%, some of the numbers have been changed, I have the list of changes. So I will read each line item. Anyone who wants to discuss a line item, yell out "hold", we'll mark that off, then we'll then go back, vote the ones that are not held, and then we can discuss whatever's being held. So, beginning with line item 80. Line item, Highway Surveyor Salary, $69,486. Highway Wages, $284,181. Highway Clerical, $39,371. Highway Expense, $4,0971. Highway Barn Maintenance, $10,100. Highway Equipment, $48,500. Highway Town Roads, $74,355. Highway Snow and Ice, $177,509. Street Lights, $27,300. Traffic Lights, $5,500. Tree Wardens Salary, $1. Tree Maintenance, $3,500. Insect and Pest Control, $1. The total is 743,626. I have a hold on... Oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong number, you're right. 744,775. I have one hold on line item number 88, which is Street Lights. Any? Yes, sir.
I just have a question on it. I know the cost of electricity is up. Is it up that much, 20% or 40%?
You're gonna have to come up, because I can't hear you either.
Hi, Don Charlie, Mont Ponce.
I'm not sure that's all, push the button now.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hi, Don Charlie, Mont Ponce. I just wanted to know if going up 20% is the proper amount? I know electricity's going up. That's my only question.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes, we have gone through and reviewed all electricity bills with the new rates, and did the necessary multiplication of how much electricity we use versus how much we pay per kilowatt hour, and that's the best number we can come up with based on those estimates.
Okay, does that answer your hold? Okay, so we do have, we have no holds any longer. So on the figures for Public Works Highway, line items 80 through 92, seeing no evidence of any further debate, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. unanimous, moving on to Public Works Cemetery. Line item 93. Cemetery Superintendent Salary, $10,409. Cemetery Wages, $67,958. Cemetery Supplies and Equipment, $5,770. The total amount for Cemetery is $84,137. It didn't have any holds, so seeing no evidence of any discussion, all those in favor of Public Works Cemetery say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously, moving on to Public Works Water. Line item 96. Water Superintendent Salary, $68,313. Water Wages, $190,784. Water Clerical, $44,359. Water Supply, $182,100. Water Distribution, zero. Water Insurance, $50,237. Water Retirement, $13,000. Water Legal Fees, $1,500. Water Meters, $25,000. Water Gas and Oil, $13,750. We have a hold on line item 105. Water Vehicles, $9,000. Water Tower and Wells Maintenance, $25,000. The total for Public Works Water, $623,043, which may change or not depending on what happens on 105. So, on all of those line items except for number 105, which is Water, Gas and Oil, seeing no evidence of any discussion, yes?
It's from the Water Fund, the state of the state.
On 105?
The whole of all the...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's all, thank you. Subpart D from the Water Fund. I didn't see that, okay.
This moderator now scores a hold on 97.
120? What number?
97.
97. Water Wages. Other than 97? In 105. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously, moving on to the holds. We'll start with, the first hold was 105, so who raised that question?
Moderator Rick Greeley from Plymouth Street. Price of Oil is, I mean, to stay low, $70 a barrel for the next couple of years, that's considerably less than what it's been in the last two years. I wonder why the increase?
Okay, there's someone from the Water Department? Well, it's the same, it's not an increase, it's the same as last year. $13,750? Someone from the Water Department here, Charlie, somebody can explain how that's calculated? Mr. Clarkes?
We get those figures from the Highway Department and through Public Charlie, and they tell us what they want us to put in based on the amount that we use per year.
Any other questions on line item 105? Any other discussion on 105? All those in favor of line item 105 at $13,750 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes by majority. Moving to line item 97, Water Wages. We had a hold.
Mel Conroy, 7th Road. I question whether this number reflects what we turned down to the Water Department for the $1.50 per hour, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year last yesterday's meeting.
Water Superintendent?
Correct.
Mrs. Nolan, the Town Accountant, might have an answer for us?
There was no extra money built into these wages for that amendment.
Okay, so that was not put into this. Any further discussion on line item 97? Yes, sir?
Hi, Jason Conroy, 21 Jordan Road. So that equals 9% pay increase for Water Department Wages? I just want to make sure that's right, over the last year.
Question is, there is an increase of, you calculate 9%? Is that the question? All right, somebody wanted to take a crack at that? Mrs. Nolan. Mrs. Nolan is the Town Accountant.
We did have some step increases included in that figure this year.
Any further questions or discussion on line item 97? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of line item 97 at $188,895, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes by majority.
One, three, one, three, one, 190, 784.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, let me re-vote that. This is a little confusing. All right, so, line item 97, just so we have a clear vote. The wage rate is 1, for Water Wages, $190,784. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. Moving on to Public Works Solid Waste. And line item 108. Recycling Office Clerical, $27,491. Recycling Office Expenses, $2,890. Recycling Center Wages, $79,227. Recycling Center Expenses, $24,300. Hazardous Waste Collection, $12,335. Trash Collection Disposal, $219,902. And the total amount is $366,245. Having no holds. Oh, I'm sorry, from E, which is, what's that?
Solid Waste Fund.
Solid Waste Fund, thank you. All from E, Solid Waste Fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously, moving on to Health and Human Services. Line item 114. Board of Health Clerical, $40,271. Board of Health Expenses, $7,395. Board of Health Inspections, $64,306. Board of Health Nursing Services. Mrs. Nolan, is it $7,000?
Yeah.
Board of Health Nursing Services, line item 117, $7,000. Board of Health Landfill Engineering, $14,47. Inspector of Animals, $2,929. Council on Aging Wages, $174,996. Council on Aging Expenses, $8,880. Pope's Tavern Electricity, $2,500. Veterans Agent Salary, $14,000. Veterans Aging Expense, $1,269. Veterans Service Officer, zero. Veterans Benefits, $190,000. Housing Authority, $1. ADA Expense, $1. Total of Health and Human Services, $527,703. Don't have any holds. Seeing no evidence of any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Moving on to Culture and Recreation, line item 129. Library Director Salary, $63,106. Library Wages, $163,376. Library Expense, $84,953. Youth and Recreation Wages, $14,582. Youth and Recreation Expense, $13,212. Youth and Recreation Director, $16,387.
It was 13,216.
What number?
Line 133.
$13,216?
Yeah.
Youth and Recreation Director, $16,387. Parks Wages, $100. Parks Expenses, $450. Cable Television, $1. Patriotic Celebrations, $400. Historic Commission, $2,499. Historic District Commission, $446. Holidays in Halifax, $3,395. Beautification Committee Expense, $500. Website Committee Expense, $3,050. Total of Culture and Recreation, $366,461. Seeing no evidence of any debate, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Moving on to Debt Service. Line item 144. Debt Water Extension Project, $89,250. CAF, is that a bond?
It's from the Water Chamber.
From the Water Bond. 145 Debt School Library Project Zero. 146 Debt Police Station, $141,345-G.
Which is a debt exclusion.
Debt Exclusion. 147 Debt Water Pollution Abatement Trust, $10,400-I.
That's from the Water Abuse Trust Fund.
148 Debt Water Pollution Abatement Trust II, $10,000-J.
From the Water Abuse Trust.
149 Debt Landfill Capping, $118,688-H and K.
Which is under debt exclusion, and from, there was some that's being funded from the fund balance reserve of on premium of $601.
150 Interest on Temporary Loans, $5,000. Total Debt Service, $374,683. Seeing no evidence of any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously, Fixed Costs. Line item 151, Retirement, $1,008,901-L.
$46,000 is coming from the Water Revenue Fund.
Line item 152 Group Insurance Town Share, $887,560. Medicare Town Share, $107,934. Insurance, $254,000. Telephone, $29,200. Gas and Oil, all departments, $140,650. Heating, all buildings, $78,650. The total fixed costs, depending on what happens on those two holds, is $2,506,895. So I have holds only on line items number... 56 and 157. So, as to line items number 151 through 155, seeing no evidence of any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Going now to line item 156. Somebody call a hold.
Rick Greeley again from Plymouth Street. I see no reason for this increase in the fuel oil budget. It's obvious that the price of oil is far less expensive than it was the last three or four years, and according to everything that I've read, the price of oil and energy is going to remain low for the next couple of years. I will withdraw my hold on the second one. I believe part of that is gas, so I don't want any part of that hold. I'd like to withdraw that.
Which one are you talking about, gas and oil? That's line item 156.
Well, gas and oil is combined.
Yep, and that's the same as last year. $140,650?
Right.
Right, so there's no increase in that?
I would like to amend that to 129. The price of oil and gas is going down, not up. If it was going up, instead of having an empty tank down the street, I'd have a full tank. I don't see any increases coming in the near future. We should be, we should be bringing that down considerably.
Okay, so are you speaking against this number, or are you making a motion to amend?
I think we ought to turn around and cut that line, that figure by at least 5 or 10%. I won't make a, I won't make a motion on that until I figure out the math on it, but it should be decreased about 5%.
Okay, good.
And, all right, we can make an amendment to cut that budget by 5% at least.
Let's see if Mrs. Nolan can do the calculations for you.
Thank you.
John, 5% is $70,000.
7,000.
So it'd be $133,650 approximately.
Sandy agree with that number?
Yes.
All right, so I have a motion on line item 156 to amend the figure to $133,650. Do I have a second? The motion and the second, to reduce the figure of 156, oh, line item 156 to $133,650. Mr. Greeley, it was your motion, do you like to speak to it again, or? So remember, we'll require, assuming the first motion is a yes, it'll require a second motion, a second vote rather, because we'll have to have, this is just to amend the figure.
The United States is becoming one of the biggest producers of energy in the world. It's getting to be number one within the next year or two. I see this as a good reason to decrease that budget.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation? While you're doing that, Mr. Sealy has a comment.
I appreciate the previous speaker's expertise in this subject, but I think most of us would be wrong if we thought we could have predicted that the price of gasoline for us at the pump was going to be below $2 a few months ago, and then make an equally great prediction that we'd now be paying $2.60, $2.50 a few months later. Those prices are extremely volatile. We've seen that happen even in the last 12 months. I understand right now, the prediction is, things are going to be good. We're going to be able to continue to pay lower prices than we did more than a year ago. But even in our few years, we hit $4, what was it, seven years ago? And then we went down to $2, and then went back up about $3. I'd rather leave the money there, knowing that we don't have to come back to this town meeting or to the Finance Committee late in the year for a reserve fund transfer, and then if the money's not spent, it's not as if we're holding on to the gasoline and diesel that we'd be buying someplace. The money comes right back, goes back to the general fund. You'll have an opportunity to decide what to do with it at that point.
Recommendation from the Finance Committee. On the motion to amend? The Finance Committee recommends. Finance Committee recommends, yes ma'am? Come on up front.
Hi Karen Faber, Clydesdale Bosmar. I just have, I want to know how much is left in that line item. We had a pretty severe season this past year, so what's left in that budget now?
You can answer that question, Mrs. Nolan maybe?
That budget currently has $56,814 left in it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Heather Rogers, Knight Avenue. I wanted to say that it doesn't matter how much oil and gas we produce in the US, it all goes on the world market. And unless Congress were to pass some law that would keep it here in the United States and not go into the world market, where we're subject to the volatility of the Middle East, I don't think anybody can predict what's going to happen over in Syria or in Yemen, where it's bottleneck right there. So I think we should leave it at last year's.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Jason Conroy, Jordan Road, Halifax, Mass. Oh yeah, we're all from Halifax. Seeing that we've got pretty close to 50%, not quite 50%, left in the fund from the 140 allocated last year, and we've got to go through, you know, not too much longer. I think a modest decrease of 5% is not all that much to ask for, whereas fuel prices have come down considerably, and the fact that if there is a significant spike in fuel cost in the future, we do have a Finance Committee that can make allocations for that, so having a cut now, I believe, would be a good thing in the fact that there is a remedy if unforeseen things happen in Yemen or anything like that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment, motion to amend line item 156, Gas and Oil, to the figure of $133,650? Seeing no further evidence of discussion. This is the first motion. The motion is simply whether or not you want to amend the figure. Assuming that passes, there'll be a second vote on whether to accept it. So, all those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes by majority. Now move to the amended figure. So the amended figure of line item 156 is $133,650. Any further discussion on the amended figure? Seeing no evidence thereof. All those in favor of the amended figure of $133,650, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes by majority. Moving to the next hold. Line item 157, Heating All Buildings. Mr. Greeley is out of your hold also?
He said he passed on it.
I'm sorry?
He said he passed on it, but can I?
Oh, you're on the hold, okay, thank you. I didn't hear you. Okay, so, now we have to vote on line item 157, Heating All Buildings. The figure is $78,650. Seeing no evidence of any, yes ma'am?
Joy Malville, Woods Street. I just want to know, is Heating All Buildings, is that the maintenance of the heating systems, or is that part of the oil?
Mrs. Nolan?
The Heating All Buildings is the oil and gas prices for the heating of the buildings, not the maintenance.
The total figure, can somebody do the math here for me? Instead of 2, 506, 895? Yes? 895, thank you. $2,499,895. We're voting now on line item 157, Heating All Buildings, $78,650. Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
Mrs. Nolan, how much we have in that fund?
Mr. Lord, how much we have in that fund this year?
The microphone.
Hello again, I'm Don Chadly. Um, how much we have, how much do we have left in this fund from this year? From fifteen, please?
We'll find out.
Okay, this, and these figures are a week old, but we have thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars left.
Hi, Jason Conrad, Jordan Road, Halifax again. I'd like to make a motion to amend that, uh, down by ten percent based upon the money that we have left in the fund.
Somebody can do the math for me?
Seventy thousand, seven eighty-five.
Say, say again, please?
Seventy thousand, seven eighty-five.
Seventy-five thousand?
Seven zero.
Oh, seven zero?
Seven eight five.
Seven eight five. We have a second to, a motion to amend line item one fifty-seven to the amount of seventy thousand, seven eighty-five. A motion and a second to amend line item one fifty-seven to seventy thousand, seven eighty-five. Conrad, it's your motion. Do you want to speak to it? You don't have to, okay. Finance committee's recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Finance committee recommends. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing no evidence thereof, this will be the same as the last procedure. We first need to amend the figure if that's what the body wants to do. All those in favor of amending line item one fifty-seven to the figure of seventy thousand, seven eighty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes by majority. We now move to the amended figure, seventy thousand, seven eighty-five. Well, you don't need to hold it. We can just, hold on a second. So, uh, we have amended figure of seventy thousand, seven eighty-five is on the floor. Do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, if you take time to say it.
You have to come on up.
Ten percent would bring the figure to sixty-three?
No.
The seven eight? Seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty.
Okay, I withdraw.
Okay, any other discussion on the amended figure of seventy thousand, seven eighty-five? Seeing no evidence thereof. All those in favor of the amended figure of seventy thousand, seven eighty-five on line item one fifty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes by majority. We now move into the lottery system again. The new total, well, the new total is in that section, it's two thou, two million, four ninety-nine, eight ninety-five.
We have four ninety-two already.
Four ninety-two what?
Four nine two zero three.
So the total, uh, total fixed cost is two million, four ninety-two, zero three zero. It's not really a figure we vote, it's just like, uh, it's just an administrative. Okay, the next article will be article fifty-three. Article fifty-two is closed by the council on agents.
I'm Barbara Brennan, the council on agent. I moved at the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K allowing the Board of Selectmen to establish a property tax work-off program for taxpayers over sixty years of age. Said program to begin on July first, two thousand and fifteen, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen.
We have a second. I have a motion and a second to, uh, accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K, allowing Board of Selectmen to establish a property tax work-off program for taxpayers over sixty years old. Said program to begin July first, two thousand and fifteen, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. Yes, ma'am, it's your article.
Yes, I, um, just kind of want to give you a brief history, um, of the senior tax work-off program. I know a lot of people know what it is and others do not. Um, we do have a handout on the back table, um, if you want to refer to that. But this program, um, was started in Massachusetts in nineteen ninety-nine. So it's been in progress for sixteen years. And the purpose of it is to allow qualified taxpayers to perform volunteer community service for particip, to participate in town departments in order to receive an abatement on their property tax. It is a volunteer work program for taxpayers which has been very popular with over a hundred towns and cities from Massachusetts that have taken part in it presently. Participants are considered employees, receive an earned income. They also must meet eligibility criteria such, um, I'll give you a few examples. You have to be sixty years of age or older. You have to be a homeowner for at least five years. Um, there's an income and asset limit. You must pass a core check. And you have to be current with, uh, tax payment for a few. These are just a few of the criteria. The credited hourly rate cannot exceed the state minimum, minimum wage of nine dollars an hour. Taxpayers in this program volunteer their service to the municipality in exchange for an actual abatement of their tax bill, which will be seven hundred and fifty dollars. Two people will be chosen. They'll be chosen by lottery, which is the fairest way to do it, and assigned to a town department for their work. There have been four town departments that have given me their job descriptions at this point in time. The participants will work a total of eighty-three point three hours from August first to February, to February first, two thousand and sixteen, which is a seven-month span. The program will only affect our tax rate, and I'm going to say this twice, point zero zero one nine of one penny. The program will only affect our tax rate at point zero zero one nine of one cent. Every year, the Board of Assessors put aside money to cover abatements and exemptions. And the total amount of money for this program for two participants that we will pick will be seven hundred and fifty dollars each, only equaling fifteen hundred dollars. So we're gonna, we will try to start it simple and slow. This will be taken, um, from the overlay surplus fund. The program administrator will be the council on agent director, that's how it works in Massachusetts, assisted also by the town assessor, the treasurer collector, and the accountant. Program has proven to enhance municipal service by utilizing skills of senior citizens in Massachusetts and will be a win-win for all involved.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee's recommendation?
The finance committee recommends.
Finance committee recommends. Any further discussion on article fifty-three? Yes, sir?
How you doing? Jason Conrad, Jordan Road. If there's four, uh, departments that are doing, uh, can we do four, um, abatements? Can I amend it to make it, if there's four downtown departments that wish to, you know, you know, have someone work for them, can we amend that to four? Or is that not allowed in the state laws and only two that's allowed?
Let me see, just get an answer for that, Mr. Seelig.
The decision tonight for the town meeting members is whether or not to implement the program. The details of the program are dealt with through the Board of Selectmen. So that, for instance, if you wanted to increase it to four people or ten people or however, or change the parameters of the program, you can't do that here. It's simply a yes or no on whether we're going to have a program or not. The information about the details that, uh, the council on agent director provided is what they discussed with the Board of Selectmen already and laid out. Now, they can change those details and there may be more information from the principal assessor or from the council on agent director for what those possibilities would be for this year or for future years. But for right now, the decision tonight is simply, should we have a program or not?
You can lobby the Board of Selectmen if you want.
Thank you very much. I think you should make it four.
Any further discussions on, uh, item, uh, article fifty-three? Seeing no evidence thereof. All those in favor of article fifty-three as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes through the analysts.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mrs. Hanson.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider article four, line item seventy-eight.
Do we have a second?
How you doing? Jason Conrad, Jordan Road. Based upon Robert's Rules of Order, um, let me see if I can see it here. This can only be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side. And my understanding of prevailing is the side that, um, was, that won the vote. And I'm going to guess that people from the school committee voted against it. I'm just guessing. Uh, so I don't believe that this, this should be revisited unless it's revisited by someone who voted to, voted with it. And I know that we've had precedent, but it's the rule of order.
The, uh, town is, uh, is governed by multiple different sources. Robert's Rules of Order is sometimes a reference. Town meeting time is sometimes a reference. Uh, I think the strongest reference though is precedent. And in my thirty years, we have never asked that question. Uh, I have, uh, distinct memories of moderators being asked the same exact question and it's just never been done in Halifax. I don't intend to change that practice and that'll be my ruling. So it's not necessary, uh, in order to move to reconsider that you'd be on the winning side or the losing side. And our bylaw doesn't say anything about it anyway. So the motion's in order. There's a second. Is there a second? I didn't hear. Otherwise, okay. So you want to move to line item seventy-eight to reconsider? Line item seventy-eight, and the first question will be whether or not the body wants to reconsider the, reconsider that article. This is just a vote, just like on the amendments, is the vote to whether or not to reconsider. We'll then take up the article itself, assuming that vote passes. So any, first of all, finance committees, let me, let me ask Mrs. Hanson. Do you want, you want to speak to your motion to reconsider?
No, I think it's pretty clear.
Thank you. Finance committee's recommendation?
Uh, the finance committee recommends.
Finance committee recommends reconsideration. Any further discussion on the question of whether or not to reconsider article four, line item seventy-eight, which is the Silver Lake assessment?
Michael Martin, Eldana Road. Residents of Halifax, I spoke briefly last night asking for the town members to simply support the schools. I feel that the vote to amend the Silver Lake Regional School District budget last night, while financially compelling in future projections, failed to truly represent the whole issue. It failed to point out any of the work currently being done to cut costs at Silver Lake as well as provide citizens with any information about the ramifications of not approving the budget at this time. There are a few reasons why I support a vote to reconsider the budget vote. First, the timing of the vote at way past eleven meant many town members had already left before the vote occurred. More importantly, I feel that a finance committee member created a conflict of interest in circumventing the committee's recommendation and putting a hold on an item out of personal dissent. The citizen has every right to their actions. However, the timing and nature of the debate did not allow for a proper rebuttal to their arguments. I would like to make it known that as stated in the warrant that the finance committee had previously supported all parts of the budget proposed last night before the hold was placed. I simply ask the members of the town to vote to reconsider the vote so that more information can be given to show the town how the schools are already working to cut costs and the ramifications of this vote on the community. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
Hi, in regards to the previous speaker stating that, um, people had left, um, I wasn't counting people at the door, but I know that the voices of the people that were here last night were heard. And it was a resounding rejection of the, of, or a resounding acceptance of the amendment. And it was by a lot. It wasn't, it wasn't by two votes. It was by a lot of votes. Um, to bring it up again tonight after the dissenting side has had time to basically rally the troops and get people here is basically a slap in the face to anybody who came here last night and voted. And it's, I'm disgusted by the fact that this would be done. We had people fight and die for people to come here last night. And for you to do this again. I said this last year, I'll say it this year, I'll say it next year, anytime this comes up. To come back the next day after you get a chance to stack a deck, that's dirty politics.
Well, let me, let me just, uh, before this gets too far on the game. We have procedures in place so that we can run an orderly meeting. One of the possible procedures to run an orderly meeting in Halifax, as it's been in my experience in thirty years, has been to have, uh, options available to reconsider articles. There are procedures you have to follow. The very first procedure is if it's not reconsidered in the evening meeting, you have to put the town on notice. Mrs. Hanson did that at the end of last night. She put the town on notice. Everyone had the opportunity to come back. We're following the same procedures. It may not be a procedure you like, but that's one of our procedures and we're going to follow it that way. Secondly, uh, we have to keep the rhetoric down somewhat. I appreciate that, uh, the motions will run very high on this and they always do on reconsideration. Every reconsideration is a difficulty simply because you feel like it's gone one way, it's gone back. But that's how our system works. So we're going to try to do that if we can. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Robert Sligger, Twin Lakes Drive. I rise in support of reconsideration. It's often been said that town meeting is the purest form of democracy. I'd like to see that at work tonight. There seems to have been some confusion last night as to the FinCom's position on the amendment. Um, initially, as was previously stated by another speaker, the FinCom supported the budget as, um, as a whole in the warrant. And then last night voted to support the amendment and offered no explanation as to why they changed their minds. I think, um, that's something I personally, as a voter, would like to understand a little bit better tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, Jeff Bolger, Brandy Circle. I believe as the, uh, finance committees pointed out last night, this is just the first step in a process. And I think it sends a strong signal to the school committee that they need to do a little tougher work on their budget. It, you know, for people to say, oh, this is going to kill the schools and all. You know, no one's got laid off at this point. Nothing's actually been cut. It's just basically I rejecting their budget and saying, go back and take a look at it. They may decide to hang tough and not, not do anything and come back to us. But at least we're sending a message and I think that's important.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Bolger, is your view, the motion is the motion to reconsider. You're in favor or not?
I oppose.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. So to keep this straight, before we get to the discussion of whether or not we have a different figure, we have to decide whether to have a discussion about that.
Paula Hatch, Silver Lake School Committee. I agree that we have to scrutinize all the budgets in the town, school committee, whatever. We started with a much higher budget and we spent a lot of time whittling it down. We started with a much higher budget, and we spent a lot of time whittling it down, taking things out, sharpening our pencil. And we went to the Finance Committee more than once and talked about the budget and presented the budget, and we walked away from the last meeting with the Finance Committee.
Excuse me, Plan Board, is she for it or against it? No, no, no. You're out of order. Please don't do that. You can't interrupt like that. Please don't do that again.
We left the last...
I keep your comments to reconsideration.
I strongly believe we should reconsider. We brought the budget down, we met with the Finance Committee, they agreed to the budget. We did not know there was non-agreement until last night.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Anderson. Again, try to keep this on a, on a level that we can all agree with.
So, whether you vote to reconsider or not, the Finance Committee was not a unanimous decision on their vote to support the budget. It was three to two. And I adamantly spoke at the Finance Committee meeting on April 6th about this. We had a thirty-minute discussion over this. The vote was three to two.
Are you speaking as a Finance Committee member?
I'm up here as a private citizen, not standing up at the mic, because I was asked to do that last night.
Any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Remember, the only question before the body is whether or not you want to take up this issue yet.
Joy Marblewood Street. I think some of the questions in people's minds might be the fact that he came up here with the same list from last year, when there was the settlement money at issue. Okay? So, now, we're wondering, is he trying to get the money some other way to get the same things that he wanted last year, when it failed last year for the settlement money? Maybe I'm confused. The superintendent...
Mr. Taffey, when he answered some of the questions?
Yes.
So, does that affect your decision to reconsider?
Yes, I don't want to reconsider. I mean, I have children in the school system and everything, and I do agree that the money should be in the budget. I just, that whole thing about, you know, the two towns voting one way or the other, and the settlement money from the settlement, whether they're able to spend it, and maybe this is a different way of spending it. I'm sorry.
Are you speaking in favor of the motion to reconsider?
No, not to reconsider.
Not, you don't want to reconsider? Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I just wanted to clarify a few points from the first speaker tonight. When the hold was placed on the item for Silver Lake last night, that was placed by an individual taxpayer, not by the Finance Committee. Additionally, the motion to amend the figure was not done by the Finance Committee. That was also a separate individual taxpayer that made the motion. Yes, the Finance Committee did change their vote. We were three to two on it, and I just wanted to let everyone know, we have the right to do that. We've done numerous times at the table last night and also tonight. So, I just wanted to clarify those points for people who had questions about it.
Finance Committee's role is to advise the body, so whether they recommend something, don't recommend something, is entirely up to the body to accept it. Their job is to investigate and make their recommendations, so they don't, other than their ability to do that on every motion, everything, they don't have any other authority than that. You don't have to listen to them. Any other discussion on reconsidering Article 2, line item 78? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Moderators in doubt, I want to have a count. Again, everybody in the back, please, has to take a seat. Dr. Hopkins, you have to sit down, please. Thank you. All the visitors are in visitor's center or in the business block. Okay, so, we will now move, we will now vote on Article 78. The sole question before the body is whether to reconsider last night's actions on Article 2, Article 4, I'm sorry, line item 78. All those in favor of reconsideration, please stand and remain standing. All of those, Mr. Hayward, you have to stand outside if you're not voting. Okay. Of those present and voting, fifty-three yes, seventy-three no, the motion fails. Moving on to the next article. The next article will be Article 54. Article 54 and Article 55, in the moderator's judgment, run together, so once we complete Article 54, we will then move next to Article 55. Article 54 is presented by the Planning Board. Playing Board? Board of Selectors? Somebody has to make a motion, or we're going to move on.
Mrs. Moderator.
Yes.
I would, I would move it as written.
As printed in the warrant?
No. It's fifty-five, right?
Fifty-four.
Oh, fifty-four.
Mr. Moderator. I'd like to motion to move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U, Paragraph 12, as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second? Second. The motion in a second to accept Article 54 as printed in the warrant, Article 54 accepts Mass. General Law's, excuse me, Chapter 41, Section 81U, Paragraph 12.
Well, the concern right...
Somebody has to speak.
Please.
Mr. Moderator, I don't know if anybody from the playing board is here tonight. One of the requirements, this is a zoning bylaw, or not, but it's not zoning, so we don't need the playing board. Okay, good. We'll get to the zoning articles and worry about those then. The statute allows, let me go back a minute. When someone comes in to build a subdivision, the playing board can accept a passbook with money in it to hold onto in case the developer does not complete the infrastructure, all the roadwork, drainage, et cetera. But however, in order to spend that money, and then we have a situation that's described later in the warrant, we need to accept this section. In this case, the developer has, in fact, walked off from the work that was to be done. We have a passbook, we want to use that money, and to do so, however, we need to accept the state statute.
Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 54.
Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 54 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 54, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We will now move to Article 55, because I believe they are related, so grab a motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Schlager.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the security deposit from the Two River Farm subdivision, the sum of $118,296.31, or the full amount of the security deposit for the Two River Farm subdivision, in order to perform work on the roads and associated infrastructure of the Two River Farm subdivision, as allowed under Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U, Paragraph 12, said transfer contingent upon the failure of the developer to complete the necessary work by August 31st, 2015.
We have a second. Second. There's a motion in a second, and it's a little bit different than what's printed in the warrant, so I'll just read it again. That the town vote to transfer from the security deposit for the Two River Farm subdivision, the sum of $118,296.31, or the full amount of the security deposit for the Two River Farm subdivision, in order to perform work on the roads and associated infrastructure of the Two River Farm subdivision, as allowed under Mass. General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81U, Paragraph 12, said transfer contingent upon the failure of the developer to complete the necessary work by August 31st, 2015. Mr. Seale?
This is a circumstance that I was describing a little bit earlier, in this particular subdivision. The contingency is there because while this was being worked on, in the sense of developing these two articles, the property was sold from the original developer to a new developer. The new developer communicated to the playing board that it is their intent to finish the infrastructure work by August 31st. So, what we've done is set up a contingency, so that the money will not be moved from the passbook if the work is completed to the satisfaction of the playing board, and meaning that they work with the highway department on this. Not that the highway department's in charge of the work, playing board is, and they would be hiring an outside firm to complete the work, but the work has to meet the town's standards under the subdivision control by law. So, if we get to August 31st, the playing board will then have the option of, in fact, taking money out of the passbook for the work to be done. Does that mean they have to do it on that particular date? No. They might, the developer might say to them, can you wait a week? We just have this one last thing to do. It's, it's going to be within the playing board's jurisdiction to wait however long they want to, but after August 31st, they'll always have that ability to take money out of the passbook to complete the work.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 55.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any further discussion on Article 55? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article will be Article 22.
Could you reference the lottery number we're on? And the actual number?
I didn't hear you. Come up closer.
Mari Margaret Wood Street. Could you please reference the lottery number to the printed article number when you read it?
The lottery number?
Yeah, aren't we going on lottery on these numbers?
No, no, these balls are all numbered, and every one I pull up, that the clerk pulls up gives to me is the next warrant that we do.
Yeah, so we don't hear what you say.
Exactly. We don't hear what that number is.
Oh, you're not hearing it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'll take it, all right. I hadn't announced it yet, anyway. Probably it's a good thing you didn't hear. So, the next article is Article 22. Article 22 is proposed by the Board of Assessors.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Shabon.
Okay, John Shabon, Board of Assessors. To see if the town will, I'm sorry, I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance, the sum of $10,000, to the assessors' fiscal year 2017 triennial reevaluation account.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to transfer from undesignated fund balance, the sum of $10,000, for the assessors' fiscal year 2017 triennial reevaluation account. Mr. Shabon, your article.
For three years, we asked the town to appropriate $10,000 in order that we have the money available for the triennial revaluation in 2017.
Finance Committee's recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 22? Seeing no evidence, see no evidence thereof, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next article will be Article 49.
She's proposed by the Council on Aging.
I move that the town vote to transfer from overlay surplus, the sum of $1,350, to create computer network interface and backup system for Pope's Tavern Senior Center at the Halifax Council on Aging.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to transfer from overlay surplus, the sum of $1,350, to create the computer network interface and backup system for Pope's Tavern, Halifax Council on Aging. Yes, ma'am, your article.
Yes, we have waited a long time to be interfaced. Like was said last night, it's 2015, and we're living in a technology world, and we're not interfaced, we don't have backup drives. Though it forbid, we haven't lost any data yet, and we do have a large database over there for a couple of different reasons. So, we want to run more effectively and more efficiently, and so we're asking for this little bit of money to bring us up to, you know, power with our computer systems.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any further discussion on Article 49 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next article will be Article 21. That's proposed by the Water Commissioners. Mr. Swanson.
Keith Swanson, the local water superintendent, Ridgeview Avenue. I move that the town vote to transfer $50,000 from the Water Department System Development Fund, and $450,000 from the Water Department retained earnings, for a total of $500,000, to pay additional costs for repairing, excuse me, repainting and renovating the Halifax Water Department water tower, in addition to the appropriation of $1,100,000 from Article 18 of the annual town meeting of May 14th, 2012.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to transfer $50,000... to transfer $50,000 from the Water Department System Development Fund and $450,000 from Water Department retained earnings for a total of $500,000 to pay additional costs for repairing, repainting, and renovating the Halifax Water Department water tower in addition to the appropriation of $1,100,000 from Article 18 of the annual town meeting of May 14, 2012. Mr. Swanson, your article.
It is.
Do you want to speak to it?
I'd like to have our project manager speak, if there's any questions.
We have him here.
He is a visitor.
The project manager is now a town meeting member. And I'm going to ask the body, as long as I don't hear an objection, then he can make his presentation. I'm not hearing an objection. Please take the microphone. Just tell us who you are.
Yes, my name is John Gregory. I'm with Tate and Howard. We're the engineering consultant for the Halifax Water Department. We're bringing this article to the forefront today because we originally bid this project with the town back in December of 2012. Bids came in over budget. Following the receipt of those bids, we reevaluated the project with the Water Department, looked at areas where we could potentially lower costs. And since that time, we've been working to revise the plans and specifications that would be required to rebid the project. As such, we rebid the project back in March of this year, March of 2015. And we were able to obtain real-time numbers in an effort to come to town meeting, knowing that there was a very good chance that we were going to need to request additional funding. That is the case, we were able to get some real-time numbers. And as such, we are requesting the additional $500,000, which will be taken, as Mr. Swanson alluded to, from funding that is already in place by the Water Department. These are existing funds that the Water Department has. That's basically what we have to say about that at this point. And we're open to answering questions from the floor.
You have a seat.
Thank you.
We get the Finance Committee's recommendation. Finance Committee's recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions for, I'm sorry, I forget his name. I'm probably not supposed to address him, I have to address you, but...
Ask your question.
My question is this, is that back in 2012, we got a bid for 1.1 million, which we appropriated the money for, we borrowed $700,000. Now, three, and I'm guessing we awarded a contract. First off, did we award a contract on it? Is my first question. And if we didn't award a contract and they're now coming back for another $500,000, have we re-put it out to bid to see if someone else can come in and do this job? You know, to bid this job at a less expensive amount?
All right, we'll try to find out. Yes, sir.
We, as I alluded to earlier, we did rebid this project in March in an effort to try to get some lower bids for the town. And the bids came in. The low bid was approximately $85,000 less than the low bid back in December of 2012. At the current time, this type of construction is very specialized construction. There aren't a lot of contractors out there that do tank repainting rehabilitation projects. And in particular, this project, this is an elevated water tower directly adjacent to Town Hall and sensitive areas in town. And there are even less contractors that are able to do that type of work. So unfortunately, the competition is not as vast as it might be for a different type of tank than this elevated tank that we have in place. And I apologize, could you repeat what your first question was?
His first question was, is there a contract in place? And second one, if not, did you rebid?
Back in 2012, we bid the project and the bids came in over the town's budget. So we threw out all the bids and as such, went back to the drawing board and looked for ways to lower those costs. And we got to this point in 2015. The town is at the point where they very much need to rehabilitate this tank. It is the only water tank in town. It is a critical component of the town's water distribution system. And if it's not maintained, then it'll directly affect fire protection in town, water quality in town, and the water service to the patrons of the town.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on Article 21? See no evidence thereof? All those in favor of Article 21 as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by majority? Next article will be Article 29, which is proposed by the Finance Committee. Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Irrevocable Trust Fund.
We have a second. We have a second?
Second.
Yes, we have a motion and a second to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Irrevocable Trust Fund. Mr. Andrews, it's your motion, and it's also Finance Committee's recommendation.
So the Finance Committee recommends, and this is the fund that is set up to start to pay down the outstanding liability that the town is incurring with its current employees. Sandy, could the accountant give the latest number for the outstanding balance? The liability? Or approximate?
The last audit that we had done for the OPEB liability, the OPEB liability was around $11 million.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article 29 as presented? Yes, ma'am.
Allison Long, Hudson Street. If we owe $11 million and we're raising it at $35,000 a year, what year will we actually finish paying it? I clearly don't understand something.
So you put an answer for it, Mr. Gold.
OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. The town currently pays 50% of the health insurance benefits for their retired employees. This, the actuarial study that is done protects out a 30-year liability and tries to take into account the number of employees we have, how many will be retired at that time, how many will be taking insurance. And they come up with a liability. The state has required that all towns and cities put this liability on their financial statement. We understand that this amount is not going to get us to $11 million in any time in a hurry. But by showing good faith that we are putting money towards this liability, it helps us on our financial statement. And when we go out and ask for a bond, it helps us get a better bond rating.
Any further discussion on Article 29? Seeing no evidence thereof? All those in favor of Article 29 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Next article will be Article 63. I apologize a little bit for the delay in calling the numbers, but I'm trying to keep track of all these papers, so. So Article 63 is proposed by Teresa Carmen, who is coming up to the... Yes, ma'am.
Teresa Carmen, Hudson Street. I move that the town vote to approve Article 63 as printed in the warrant, except that in paragraph 2, the words "seven members from the active farming community of Halifax" are replaced with the words "six members from the active farming community of Halifax" and "one resident at large."
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve Article 63 as printed with the addition in the second paragraph that the commission will consist of six members from the active farming community of Halifax and one at-large member. Correct? We have a motion and a second on that. Mrs. Carmen, it's your article.
Okay, Article 63 will establish an agricultural commission for the town of Halifax. As this town has grown and changed and there's been more and more new residents in town, and now, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. We've noticed that other towns around us have benefited from the establishment of such a commission. The commission is not, it would be, it would be a helping board to the other town boards to advise and promote agriculture in town. It would perhaps help the Board of Health complaints and mediate against, you know, mediate with when people are complaining about farm activities and things like that. Maybe it would help the animal inspection officer in her duties. It would promote agriculture in town, perhaps encouraging. It's an educational board. It wouldn't have any teeth. It would promote new laws and new, you know, things like that. But it would be assisting other town boards in the promotion of agriculture in the town of Halifax.
Okay, thank you. You can't hear it? Mrs. Carmen, why don't you come closer to the microphone? If you just want to kind of summarize the last bit of it.
Okay. Article 63 will establish an agricultural commission for the town of Halifax. This commission would be a seven-member commission made up of six members of the active farming community and one member at large. It doesn't have to be a farming person. The goal of this board is to be educational and promote agriculture in town. It would perhaps assist other boards when they receive complaints and help mediate between farm and non-farm people. The goal of this board is to be an assistant to our already overtaxing of our boards in helping them, helping as this town grows to promote its agriculture base, which I think everybody can appreciate. And at the same time, promote goodwill between those that aren't involved in agriculture.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 63?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Carmen, you'll have to take a seat.
I just have a question. Is this new commission going to be funded by the town in any way?
Yeah, okay.
I just have a question. Is this new commission going to be funded by the town in any way?
All right, Mrs. Carmen.
There is no funding for this commission at this time.
Okay, any further discussion on Article 63 as presented?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm speaking as myself.
We have to make it clear if you're going to be a private citizen or if you're speaking for the committee.
Private citizen, Julianne Crawford, Ford Deliway. I just had a question about the commission. If it's a commission that's supposed to be kind of neutral for farmers and just like a neutral one, not all made up of farmers, why are we having six people be farmers and one person a non-farmer? Wouldn't we want to, more of us even split, maybe four and three, if it's supposed to be kind of like a non-biased commission? That's my question.
Mrs. Carmen, do you want to try and answer that?
Yep. I don't think the commission's going to be non-biased. I think it is...
Come a little closer.
It is not going to be a non-biased commission. It is purposely meant to promote agriculture and agricultural activities and education for agriculture in town.
Any further discussion on Article 63? Yes, ma'am.
This is something that isn't a cost to the town at this point, which is always a good thing. But it smoothes the way. We have essentially moved from being entirely a farming community to being both a farming community and a bedroom community. But the two don't always mix. Even though when people are shopping for a home, they are warned that, by law, that farming can be dirty or noisy or smelling or loud at very bad hours. That's the life of a farmer. But, and so, I think a lot of times there is a friction that can be made easier for both sides. And maybe there are ways of smoothing out some of this. And I think that a good part of this is to try to make the communication better. Another element for us to be considering is farming is critical. Massachusetts is lucky enough to have plenty of water, as we all noticed this winter. But California, in the center of the country, which have been the breadbasket of, and the fruit basket, I suppose, of the country for decades and decades now, are running out of water. It isn't just the drought in California, which looks like it's going to get substantially worse before it gets better. But the whole center of the...
We're on the commission.
Okay. But the center of the country is drying out too. We need more farming, not less. And we need to do it in a way that allows other people to live in peace. So I'm strongly in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, your back.
Mr. Moderator, Lloyd Costa-Klins, South Street. I'll be brief. I'm in favor of this. And I think that there's a lot of value in having an experienced group of farmers represent the bulk of the commission. I think it's really important for us to recognize as a town struggling to manage the burden of educating our children, that there's a great need to keep open spaces and that not every piece of Halifax needs to be developed. So I think this is also an opportunity for our town to embrace our history in agriculture. I think this is a budget-neutral item. And I think as a town, we should embrace it, and I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 63? Seeing no evidence thereof? All those in favor of Article 63 as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously? Next article will be Article 27. Proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Article 27. One moment. 62 and 63 combined? Come up to the microphone.
George Paul, 32 Hillside Ave. Isn't Article 62 and 63 supposed to be combined, I believe?
No, they're not. That's the ones that will be combined are Article 58 and 59. We're on Article 27. Go ahead, you have a voice, select.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $1,800 to purchase or install a telephone in the Town Hall elevator.
We have a second? What's your article?
Currently don't have one in there. And if anybody ever gets stuck in an elevator, you can't get out of it unless you get somebody's attention. And sometimes these buildings are used at night and there's not a lot of people around. So I think it's a good idea to be able to get unstuck and be able to call somebody. Not everybody has cell phones.
Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 27.
The Finance Committee does not...
The Finance Committee does not recommend.
Finance Committee does not recommend. Do you want to tell us why?
We had concerns about whether there were bids on the cost and about the cost of the phone.
Any discussion on Article 27? Seeing no evidence thereof. The motion is to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $1,800 to purchase and install telephone in town hall elevator. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I can't tell. It's close enough that I can't tell. Everyone has to take a seat, please, in the back. Everyone in the back has to sit down, please. Everybody seated. Mr. Elliott wants to speak to the article before we get to the vote.
As Chairman Schley stated, it's an elevator. It's used during off-hours in the building. We've had a couple instances where people got stuck in the elevator. It needs to be brought up to code. $1,800 is a contractual figure from the elevator company. It involves the elevator company and an electrician at the same time, so the fee of $1,800 is disbarred.
So, who wants to see it? All those in favor of Article 27 as proposed, stand. Stay standing. If you'd be seated, please. Everyone has to be seated, please, in the back. Everyone has to be seated. Everyone has to be seated. All those opposed to Article 27, please stand and remain standing. The bill is present and voting. Seventy-nine yes, thirty-seven no. The motion passes. We'll move on to the next article. The next article will be Article 43, which is proposed by the Fire Chief. Chief?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion. No, no, wait. Article 43.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mrs. Roy.
I move that the town vote to transfer from overlay surplus the sum of $30,000 to purchase a new monitor and defibrillators for the Halifax Fire Department.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to transfer from overlay surplus the sum of $30,000 to purchase a new monitor and defibrillators for the Halifax Fire Department.
The Fire Chief will be speaking on this article.
Fire Chief is not a member of the town meeting, but can speak because he is the department head under the bylaw. Chief?
Jason Veris, Fire Chief. Article 43 is for $30,000 to purchase a new monitor. It should actually read slash defibrillator for the Halifax Fire Department. This is the monitor that we use in the back of the ambulance that does the EKGs, 12 lead EKGs, blood pressure monitoring, carbon monoxide monitoring, pulse oximetry, and temperature. So it's an all-in-one unit. Our existing unit is over 10 years old. The manufacturer is no longer making replacement parts for it. We sent it out for its... It has to go out for a regional, I'm sorry, yearly checkup, we'll call it, and to be recertified. Actually, she was very reluctant to certify it. It had some printer issues, and it was going to need some extensive repairs. Like I said, they're not making the parts anymore to support. It's called a life pact, well, to support that monitor.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 43?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 43? Seeing no evidence thereof. This again is a transfer from overlay surplus of $30,000. All those in favor of Article 43, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. The next article is Article 60. So Article 60 has to be preceded by Article 59. So we will actually move to Article 59, which is proposed by the Board Assessor. So we're doing Article 59 at this point, not Article 60 until this article is presented.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chabon?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 59 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Article 59 as printed in the warrant. Mr. Chabon, it's your article.
Okay, the... What we're requesting is the voting for the statute that would allow for the principal assessor and the other, and the other individuals who have passed the additional educational requirements to get an additional compensation and not to exceed $1,000 annually. The... There are two other departments that have the, this provision in state law, and we're just trying to get the town to approve it for the assessors as well.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 59?
The Finance Committee does not recommend.
Okay, do you want to tell us why?
The Finance Committee felt that because this was an appointed position, it was different than the two elected positions that received this possible stipend.
Any further discussion on Article 59? Seeing no evidence thereof. All those in favor of Article 59 as presented, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Article 59 fails. We now move to Article 60, and I assume that would be a passover?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion to pass over Article 60? We have a second?
Second.
All right, and I'm assuming that the reason for that is because 60 funded whatever was done in 59, right? Thank you. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee on passing over Article 60?
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay. Any further discussion on passing over Article 60? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article. Next article will be Article 35, which is proposed by the Municipal School Building Committee. Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Moderator, Jerry Elliott, Building Maintenance. I move the town vote to transfer $4,000 from undesignated fund balance and $1,000 from Article 42 Municipal School Building Group Repair Municipal School slash Water Building of the May 12, 2014 Annual Town Meeting for a total of $5,000 to repair an aerial manlift.
We have a second? We have a motion in a second to transfer $4,000 from undesignated fund balance and $1,000 from Article 2, which was the Municipal School Building Committee Group Repair and Municipal and School Building Committee Water Building of the May 12, 2014 Annual Town Meeting for a total of $5,000 to repair the aerial manlift. Mr. Elliott, it's your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This lift is used by our department for a number of buildings in town. It makes us a little safer working than off of ladders. It saves my department from going out and renting a lift for painting, power washing, and repairs the guys' roof inspections and outside parking lot repairs.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 35?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 35? Seeing no evidence thereof. All those in favor of Article 35 as proposed, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article is Article 20, which is proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Garrett?
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund as the balance the sum of $3,500 to support South Shore Community Action Council work with residents in Halifax.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $3,500 to support South Shore Community Action Council's work with residents in Halifax. Mr. Garrett, it's your article.
This is an annual article that I've supported because the South Shore Women's Resource Center deals with those people who are less able to pay for legal costs, those people who have been abused, women, and domestic violence. And I think they've done a great job over the past few years. $3,500 is a small thing to help a portion of our people in town.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 20?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 20? Seeing no evidence thereof. All those in favor of Article 20, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article. Next article will be Article 56. Article 56 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen, but it's a zoning article.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Schley?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 56 as printed in the warrant.
Okay, we have a second? We have a motion in a second to approve Article 56 as printed in the warrant. Article 56 is a change to the zoning. We need to have a planning board recommendation. Is there a member of the planning board present?
No, you can't. Mr. Greeley was here.
Mr. Greeley, yes. We need to know whether or not the public hearing was held on this and if there is a recommendation from the planning board. Thank you.
There was a public hearing. Planning Board also recommends this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 56?
Finance Committee recommends.
You know, we haven't had an explanation from the Board of Selectmen as to what this article is. Do you want to give us an explanation? What the purpose of it is?
Okay. Currently, the planning board requires eight copies to disperse through the town for the town clerk. The Board of Selectmen would like also to have a copy when they come in soon, so we can take a peek at it and see if there's any interest that the town might have sidewalks or any other changes that we might want to recommend to the planning board. So I'll ask you for an additional copy of a drawing so we can view it.
Okay. This is a zoning bylaw that will require a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 56? Seeing no evidence thereof, I'll try for a voice vote. So all those in favor of Article 56, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes by unanimously. Next article. Next article is Article 36, Municipal and School Building. Municipal and School Building Committee, Article 36.
Mr. Moderator, Jerry Elliott, Building Maintenance. I move the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $2,620 to purchase iPad and associated software for the Municipal and School Building Committee.
Okay, we have a second? We have a motion in a second to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $2,620 to purchase an iPad and associated software for the Municipal and School Building Committee. It's your article, Mr. Elliott. Do you want to speak to it?
Thank you, Mr. Murray. The software and iPad will allow me to access and import information on-site. So in other words, I won't have to look at plans and things like that. Those will also be available to do scheduling and tracking and routine maintenance, how long ago I changed parts, when they were installed, who the outside contractor was, and so on and so forth. Both the Highway and the Water Department use similar, but unique, different from what I'm looking for in their needs.
Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 36?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 36? Seeing no evidence thereof. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes by majority? Next article is Article 7, proposed by the Finance Committee.
Proposed by the Finance Committee. Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Andrews?
I move that the town raise and appropriate $75,000 to the reserve fund to cover any extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures during fiscal... during fiscal year 2016 in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 6 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and to transfer from the Water Department retained earnings a sum of $25,000 to the Water Department Reserve Fund.
Okay, do we have a second?
No, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second to raise and appropriate $75,000 to the Reserve Fund to cover extraordinary and/or unforeseen expenditures during fiscal year 2016 in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 6, Mass. General Laws, and to transfer from Water Department retained earnings a sum of $25,000 to the Water Department Reserve Fund. Mister Andrews, it's your motion and Finance Committee's recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends, and this is the annual Reserve Fund article that sets it up so when the town departments run into an issue that there's money available to cover unforeseen or extraordinary expenses.
Any discussion on Article 7? Uh, yes, sir.
Jason Conroy, Jordan Road. I guess a four-part question is, how much is in the first fund? The second question is, is how much did we use out of that fund last year? And the third question is, is how much is in the Water Department Reserve Fund? And how much do we use out of that last year?
Mrs. Lord.
The Reserve Fund is closed out every year to the General Fund, so it's not something that's carried forward. So each year, we start with the appropriation that happens at town meeting, which in the past several years has been $75,000 for the Reserve Fund and $25,000 for the Water Reserve Fund. We have not had a call to use the Water Reserve Fund, um, this year. And as far as I... Do you have the total for that? We currently have $41,000 left in the Reserve Fund.
Uh, what about the Water Department Reserve Fund?
There's still $25,000 left in that.
Still $25,000. Mrs. Roy.
I just wanted to point out that, um, throughout the years, that amount that we use, the Reserve Fund, does fluctuate depending on the needs because we don't know what the unforeseen items may be within a fiscal year, so it's important to fund this amount at the $75,000. There has been years that we have been so close to that amount. So it's important to keep in mind that you can't just use the reflection of what's going on for this particular fiscal year because it does fluctuate over the years.
Go back to the General Fund.
Yes.
Any further discussion on Article 7? All those in favor of Article 7 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, the next article will be... Next article will be Article 26. 26. Which is proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Chief.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance to a sum of $80,000 to purchase and equip with miscellaneous police equipment, two new marked police vehicles to be used for patrol.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to transfer from undesignated fund balance to a sum of $80,000 to purchase and equip with miscellaneous police equipment, two new marked police vehicles to be used for patrol. Uh, Chief, do you want to speak to your article?
Mister Moderator, this goes in line with the capital plan that we've discussed in the years past. Uh, these will be replacing our two most-used vehicles. Uh, we're not adding to the fleet. Two of our worst cars will be moved out of our fleet and reused in the department if they can be, or put up for argument.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 26.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 26? Yes, sir. In the back, yep.
Sean O'Neill, 198 Franklin Street. Um, I think we purchased two vehicles the last few town meetings, and I'm wondering if we couldn't cut down to one cruiser to save the town some money, and maybe they could struggle by with one of those older vehicles for an extra year.
Okay, we'll find out if we can. Chief, do you want to handle that?
I'm sure, Mister Moderator. Again, this isn't keeping with the capital plan we have in the past. Tried to get away with not replacing two cars a year. The maintenance cost for keeping those older cars on the road was exceedingly expensive. There was a question from a speaker last night about my vehicle maintenance budget. With keeping with the capital plan and replacing these cars, it keeps that maintenance line item where it is, so I don't have to increase that. And again, like everybody knows, we have no idea what these cars are going to be like going beyond what we believe is the use and service life.
Okay, thank you. Just right there. Nope, nope, uh, I can't remember your name. If I remember, just not called.
Hi, don't you have anyone who wants it? My question is this. I just bought a used truck and it cost me almost $30,000. Is $40,000 each for each car enough with all that computer and high-tech equipment?
We'll find out. Chief Rogers?
Uh, yes, Mister Moderator, this, uh, this sum will cover what we need. Again, these are going to be the same models that we are currently using, so a lot of the, um, equipment that are attached to it is interchangeable, so we can swap it out. Uh, we save a lot of money doing that, so, um, we will work within that budget.
Alright, thank you. Mister Bolger, you were next.
Yes, Jeff Bolger, Grand Circle. Uh, I think the Chief may have actually addressed the question that I had because this article talks about purchasing two new vehicles, which I can certainly understand. But then it went on to say, "in miscellaneous equipment", which if we have two existing vehicles, one would think that that equipment could just be swapped over into the new vehicles without having... So I'm just wondering, you know, how much of that $80,000 is going to the vehicles versus equipment?
Chief Driver?
Mister Moderator, the majority of this money goes to the new vehicles. Um, there are some items in it that get used and are not replaceable. So we use everything that we can from the old vehicles. There are a few small items, but the majority of it goes to the purchase of the car.
Any further discussion on Article 26? Yes, sir.
Hi, doing Jason Conroy, Jordan Road. We bought... Uh, we bought two marked cruisers in 2012, as well as an additional unmarked cruiser. In 2013, we bought one marked cruiser. In 2000 and... I'm sorry, 2011, we also bought... So 2011 and 2012, we got two marked cruisers each, so a total of four. Uh, 2013, we got another marked cruiser for a total of five, and then another two last year. When we come to town meeting next year, if this passes, are we looking... Is this something that we're going to replace cruisers every... Two new cruisers every single year?
Yes.
I'll find out. Chief Driver?
Again, with discussions with the Capital Planning Committee and the Board of Selectmen, that's typically what we need to do to keep the cars in the shape that they're in. So in the foreseeable future, it will be two cars a year.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I support this article. I'd just like to say...
Identify yourself.
Karen Fieber, Hidal Bosmar.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say I support this article, and by purchasing the vehicles the last few years, the town has saved money because it has not taken the money from the Reserve Fund transfer for all of the vehicle expenses that we had to in the previous year. So that's why that's down, and that's why the maintenance is down. So it is cost-effective.
Thank you. Mrs. Roy.
I'm a member of the Capital Planning Committee, and it is our wish that we continue with the two cruisers each year. Couple of things to remember is that, um, the cruisers don't... Aren't driven the same way that our own cars are driven, and so they do take a little bit more abuse than what our cars do. And so we have in the past tried to do less than the two vehicles, but again, not only do we find it, it affects our maintenance budget, but it also affects the quality. We've actually witnessed police officers going to get into the vehicle and have them not work. So we just want to make sure that when you need a police officer at your house or at an accident or any place, that they can actually get there.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
No, Conroy, also speaking as a member of the Capital Planning Committee. I think the other members of the committee will remember that I was very adamant about pushing for one, thinking that we could get by. I have been, I don't want to say persuaded, but I have been convinced that the current capital plan going forward with two cruisers a year is the most prudent.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on Article number 26? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article. The next article will be Article 58, which is proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mister Garrett.
Um, Mister Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article 58 as printed in the warrant.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to accept Article 58 as printed in the warrant. Do you want to speak to your article? Mister Sealy, do you want to speak to it?
Basically, in the past, we've had issues with people when they have renewals for trailers because of fires or damage done to their homes because of storms. What we're trying to do is to make it a little smoother process and make sure that everyone gets a fair hearing and that we get the number of hearings and notices that are necessary to make a proper decision, um, as far as renewing any kind of trailer permits in the future.
Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 58.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any further discussion on Article 58? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 58, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article will be Article 45. 45 is proposed by the Fire Chief. We have a motion from...
Mister Moderator, yes.
Yes, Mrs. Roy.
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance a sum of $160,954.15 to pay for the first year of a five-year lease purchase agreement at a total cost of $804,770.75 for a fully-equipped aerial platform truck. Purchase cost is $761,000 for use by the Halifax Fire Department and authorize the Fire Department and/or Board of Selectmen to enter into a purchase or lease purchase agreement on such terms and conditions as the Board deems in the best interest of the town and to take other action as necessary for the purpose of this vote.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to transfer from undesignated fund balance to a sum of $160,954.15 to pay for the first year of a five-year lease purchase agreement at a total cost of $804,770.75 for a fully-equipped aerial platform truck. Purchase cost in parentheses, $761,000 for use by the Halifax Fire Department and to authorize the Fire Department or the Board of Selectmen to enter into a purchase or lease purchase agreement on such terms and conditions as the Board deems in the best interest of the town and to take other actions as necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote. I know there's a presentation with this, so I'm going to ask the Finance Committee's recommendation first.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Uh, Chief?
Mister Moderator, Jason Veris, Fire Chief. I've prepared a quick PowerPoint presentation. I knew this is one of the largest articles for tonight and thought that by doing this, we might be able to answer a lot of the questions in advance, if that's okay? What we're proposing is the purchase of an aerial platform truck for the Fire Department. This is a, just a general idea. Wanted to put a picture up of it so people would have a general idea of what vehicle we're talking about. Next slide, please. To give you some background on our current, um, fleet, for structural firefighting vehicles, and when I say that, I mean engines and pumpers... I mean, I'm sorry, engines and ladders. We have a 1989 E1 ladder truck, which is a 100-foot aerial ladder, a 1996 KME engine, and a 2007 E1 engine. The last vehicle the town of Halifax actually purchased was the 1996 KME engine. The 2007 was actually covered in an assistance to firefighters grant. We did explore that as a potential funding source. Unfortunately, the priorities of the Assistance to Firefighters program have changed, and they're not awarding fire trucks the way they used to. The one that was replaced was an open cab vehicle, certainly unsafe to firefighters, and we were very fortunate to receive that. However, they've changed their priorities, and they're now funding EMS-type vehicles, community paramedicine vehicles, and that type of thing. So AFG and other grants are not really a possibility to fund this article. Next slide, please. National Fire Protection Association writes the standards on motorized fire apparatus. At 15 years, they recommend that a truck's completely refurbished. They basically strip it right down, replace some of the wiring, basically soup to nuts go right through the vehicle and refurbish it. After that, when the vehicle reaches 20 years old, it's supposed to go into a reserve status, just basically used as a backup, not a frontline vehicle. And at 25 years old, they recommend that it be replaced. The vehicle that we're recommending to replace is our 1989 ladder truck, 26 years old. But not only has it reached its lifespan according to the NFPA, those numbers are based on the premise that it had been refurbished. It has not ever been refurbished and was never in reserve status. So we're certainly outside of that guideline. Next slide, please. This is the vehicle that we're proposing to replace, and I'm going to explain how the thought... What the thought process was, um, into choosing this vehicle. It's 26 years old. It's outside of the NFPA standards. I've already spoken about that. But what a lot of people don't realize is they see this and they think it's a fire truck, and it's going to come to my house and put out a fire. And that's not going to happen. This vehicle does not have a pump. It's no pump to pump water. It does not have what we call a pre-piped waterway. So when we put up our aerial ladder and you see, or when you watch television in the morning, and every morning there's a fire on TV, they'll show water shooting out the tip of the ladder onto the fire. Well, most of... Well, most of those vehicles have a, have what they call a pre-piped waterway. The piping already exists, so when the firefighters connect the hose to the truck, water flows out that hose. This truck doesn't have that. We have to manually, when we arrive on the scene, we have to manually climb up, attach a nozzle to the tip of the ladder, take a length of hose, roll it down the ladder, and then attach our, attach our pumps in that, in that manner to it. So it's not ready for us to go when we get there. It doesn't carry any hose. As this arrives to a fire scene, I can't instruct the crew on that truck to connect to a fire hydrant and proceed to the fire. It has no supply, it doesn't have any supply line on it. So our frontline engines, they do, they have, they have a 1,200 or 1,000 feet of supply hose, so we can hook up to a fire hydrant and proceed to a fire. We can't do that with this vehicle. It requires additional, an additional pump and manpower to operate. So every time we have this show up on a scene, I, we need to attach a pumper to it because something has to supply it with water. So we have two pumpers now, the 89 and the 2007. If I know I need to use this 289 as a, in a defensive operation and I need to flow water out the tip of that ladder, I need to marry an engine to that, to that. And at that point, that engine's useless to us for any other purpose than to supply this, this truck. So it uses more manpower, much difficult, more difficult to operate. But the problem with it, you know, is that we have it come last to our scene. We had a fire earlier today and it was the last vehicle, last structural firefighting vehicle to get there. And it's because if they were to bring it sooner, we don't have a vehicle to, to attach it to. So we have them bring that second pump up first. If something happened to our primary pump, we need to have that backup pump available. So this is the last vehicle to get there. And oftentimes what happens when we, when we connect to a hydrant and we see hose laid all across the street, once we lay that hose in the street, the street's impassable to a fire truck. So to be able to position it properly is extremely difficult by the time it actually gets there. We have, you know, limited manpower as it is, so we hope that someone's available to bring it. And if they are, you know, all the ducks need to line up in a row to really make it valuable to us. As far as certifications, ladder trucks need to be certified every single year. This year, we had, we had the company come out and they refused to certify it initially this year. They required significant suspension work, required repairs to the hydraulic system. By far, this vehicle has ate up most of my maintenance budget for the year, which has done only a handful of calls it's responded to, but we need to keep it in service. We do need to have a ladder truck. It's just that this, this vehicle's costing us money to keep in service every year. And because of the operational issues I talked about, we're not really getting our, you know, the bang for the buck out of there. And as far as its current value, we've, we've met with a few different companies who sell fire apparatus and they've given me estimates of somewhere between 20 and 30,000 dollars as the current value of this truck. And if, we, we, once, we would get the new truck and this would go, go up for sale and that, whatever money came in from it would be returned to the general fund. Next slide, please. The truck we're proposing is known as a quint. So it might be a term that some of you have heard before. A quint is a, a piece of fire apparatus that serves the dual purpose of both an engine and a ladder truck. It's a Latin term meaning five. So this vehicle has a pump, it has water, it has a water, its own water tank, it has fire hose, it has an aerial device, in this case, it's an aerial platform, and it has a full complement of ground ladder. So one of the nice things about this is I can send it out the door as the first piece or the second piece, and it's going to be self-sufficient. I don't need to worry, you know, we can, it's a multi-purpose vehicle. It will add a third, it will add a third engine to our fleet. I can, just a couple of weeks ago, we had a very small fire. They responded with our 2007 engine, it was the first truck to get there, and the pump broke. It was, it, we had an issue with it. Truck was out of service for four days. The only thing we had as our backup was the 2000, I'm sorry, the 1996. And having only one pump, I wouldn't even be able to supply our current ladder truck. So in this case, we'll have an additional pump, a third pump, and that can only have a, you know, if we, if we had a catastrophic failure on one of our other pumper trucks, this would maintain our ISO rating or even improve our ISO rating, which is our insurance costs. They look at the amount of pumping capacity we have, so we're going to upgrade our pumping capacity. Next slide, please. The benefits of this particular vehicle, it's very easy to operate. We can set this up in 30 seconds to a minute. It has two jacks that come out. And once those are, once those are out and the, the truck is stabilized, it's ready to go into action. It requires very little setup and very little manpower to do that. By getting it out the door earlier and having it respond as one of our, of our primary pieces, we can better place that ladder, make better use of the ladder, perform rescues to work on defensive operations. But being able to get this to the scene quicker will certainly be improvement to our operation. It has breathable air that's supplied to the platform. So in this picture, you see two firefighters working out of a platform in a defensive operation. There's supplied air up there. So we have a, there's a big air tank mounted at the bottom. The firefighters, even though they have packs on their back, they can just tie into that and they can stay up in that situation for three, four hours. And that happens quite often in a large-scale fire. We don't have to be constantly be moving people. We can have two firefighters up there versus one working off the tip of a, of a traditional aerial ladder. And it's a much more stable work, work platform. So they're not hanging off the ladder, it's safer for them. And like I said, this is another benefit was that it was the third pumper. Next slide, please. Overall, you know, rationale was, what really hit home was it's safer. It's safer for our firefighters. You can see the firefighter left, he's working off a stable work platform. So many firefighters are injured falling off roofs. This will limit the amount of exposure our firefighters have to that or working off ground ladders. It's much safer and it's safer to make rescues. So I brought up an example the other day of try to think about rescuing an elderly resident who's bound in a, who's wheelchair bound or unable to, unable to walk. Almost impossible to carry them down or very, very difficult to carry them down a traditional ladder. When we have an aerial platform, we could move the wheelchair to the platform or easily move them to the platform. And it's much quicker to make rescues. We've, I believe the studies show at least the first five rescues we can make going up and down quicker than it would take those people to climb down a traditional ladder. So it's, it's much safer for the public and it's much, much safer for the firefighters who operate it. Next slide. And finally, I just want to stress that when we did our research, we looked for the most cost-effective solution. And this is what we came up with. It's not a fancy ladder truck by no means. Most towns are spending 1.2 plus million dollars on a, on a, on a piece of, on a ladder truck. Town of Avington just bought a ladder truck. This is a 70 to 75-foot ladder truck, not 100 foot, so we're a little shorter than we were. But it's by no means the Cadillac model. Like I said, 800,000. It serves as a dual-purpose ladder and pumper. It solves our problem, you know, one of the big problems that stood out if we replaced engine two, which was our 19, I'm sorry, yeah, the 1996, was then what do we do with a 30-year-old ladder truck? Dump another 100,000 into it, ask for 1.2 million? There was no great answer to that. So what we're trying to do is make it a multi-purpose vehicle, kind of kill two birds with one stone. And like I said, compared to the other ladder trucks out there, just by looking quick at the picture, it's not a tiller ladder truck, the second one to the right, it's, it, we, it's on, it works on a single rear axle where most traditional ladder trucks have dual rear axles. Just by going to that style ups the price by over 250,000 dollars. We really did focus on what we could do, what we could do the most with the money we're asking for. And it's a medium duty, it's 75 feet. We took it out to the condominium complex, made sure that we could work with 75 feet. And I know that there's going to be places that 75 feet, you know, there was some current concern, is 75 feet going to be enough? So we took it out there, we parked some cars, and yes, like we could make the roof, we can make the peak of the roof at Twin Lakes. We tested it out on the, on the church and we see where we could. We couldn't, we couldn't make the roof totally at the church, town hall. We took it all over town. And what I will tell you that this truck will work for Halifax. There'll always be situations where we say, we wish we had a bigger truck and, you know, when we work up, if we had a 100-foot truck, we'd say, we wish we had 120 at times. But this is what we're proposing and we feel it would work best and be the most cost-effective solution to solve our problem with the aging fleet. Next slide. That pretty much completes my presentation. I'm going to turn it over to the Selectman Roy, who can speak about the financing.
Thank you, Chief. Financing to lease is a new concept for the town of Halifax. Typically, capital items are funded with free cash. At the end of a fiscal year, any unspent line items are certified as free cash and available to spend the next fiscal year. So the capital items that we are purchasing this evening are being funded with money that was not used in last year's fiscal budget. We also rely on unused overlay, which is the funds that are set aside each year to fund abatements. But over the past few years, budgets have been cut, making our free cash numbers smaller and smaller. Since this is one of the mechanisms that we use to fund our capital items, planning for a large piece of equipment has been challenging. The average amount of funding that we have had to purchase capital items in one year is approximately 500,000 dollars and it's fluctuated over the years, but that's typically the average. This vehicle needs to be purchased for all of the reasons that our Fire Chief just explained to you. After many discussions on how to fund it, the Capital Planning Committee is recommending that the town finance this engine over a five-year lease-to-own program. We would own this engine at the end of the five years without a balloon payment. Many of the towns and the commonwealth use this process to fund capital items. Again, it's a new process for us, so we really did spend a lot of time talking about the different options. We talked about perhaps doing a one-year capital override to pay for it and we, we examined what that would cost and, and the taxpayers and, you know, whether it would be affordable based on the normal increases on your tax bills. So this is the best cost-effective way that we feel that we can get this achieved. Again, this has been on the capital plan for a couple of years. We haven't been able to fund it and, you know, we have projected out that for the next five years, we are confident that we will be able to make the lease payments that will be affordable within our capital budget and so it won't affect your, your tax bill. Thank you.
We already have the recommendation of the Finance Committee. They recommend any, any discussion on Article 45?
I personally am all for having a new fire engine. Will it fit in the fire station?
That's a great question. The last reason why we propose this particular ladder truck is that it will fit in the fire station. We have a nine, we have an, one of the problems, we have a very, very short door. So our doors are under 10 feet tall. We know there's at least one manufacturer, possibly two manufacturers that can make a truck short enough to fit in the Halifax fire station. So one of the first things when it, when it actually goes out will be a requirement that upon delivery, the vehicle fits in the truck. But I feel confident that I've met with a manufacturer who actually came out, took pictures, met with his engineering, met with his engineers back at the factory and they, they were confident they could make the vehicle fit in the Halifax fire station. But that, that's a great question and we certainly consider that.
Any further discussion on Article 45? Yes, sir.
I as well fully support this. I'm Jason Conroy, Jordan Road. My question is, as the chief alluded in the beginning of his presentation, that the current ladder truck ate up a significant portion of his vehicle and equipment maintenance. For fiscal year 17, do you expect to see a significant reduction in the amount that you request for line item number 59? Can you speak to how much was spent on that?
We'll try and get an answer. Go ahead, if you have a secret question.
I think the vehicle maintenance budget is something we could obviously look at. However, the rest of our fleet is also aging. So we have some ambulance issues. One is out of service tonight, actually. And that's our newest ambulance. So even with a brand-new vehicle, we still sometimes have issues. A2, which is our, our oldest ambulance, that has some, that, we spent a lot of money on that also this year. The Chief's vehicle has, has some significant issues. Our maintenance budget is pretty much stretched as thin as I can possibly stretch it. There's actually, I can speak about my, you know, the car that I use every day, my gas gauge reads empty for the past two months, every single day. And I go to the gas pump and fill it up to make sure that it has gas in it because I'm watching that budget and don't want to go over on that line item. So I can't really say that it would be significantly less because the rest of our fleet is, you know, getting older too. But we did spend a lot of money on this ladder. It was this, by far this year, this was the most significant cost. The pistons needed to be rebuilt. And even though I knew that we were coming to town meeting to ask for a ladder truck, it's things that we couldn't hold off on, you know, it's safety issues. We had so much hydraulic. My fear was that the firefighters would be up on the ladder and have issues, but we, my honest fear, my biggest fear was there was, there was so much hydraulic fluid on the fire station floor that probably three or four people almost broke their leg that way. So we had some things that we had to attend to and, you know, as our, the rest of our fleet gets older, I'm, I'm sure it is, we don't have a very large vehicle maintenance budget for the amount of apparatus that we have.
Any further discussion on Article 45? See no evidence thereof. All those in favor of Article 45 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. I'm going to ask that we take a few minute recess. I know the cable TV people need to switch their tapes. It's 10 o'clock, so if you could come back at 5 after 10 and resume the rest of the game.